Good evening. This is the Committee of the Whole. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colletti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes of a previous meeting. Just so everybody is aware, this is one minute, but it continued, so that's why there's two dates on the agenda. So it is for the meeting minutes of the June 17, 2024, and June 18, 2024. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes for the meeting that extended from June 16, 2024, and June 18, 2024. I've made the whole minutes for approval.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by J. A. Second and by Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Additions to the agenda, there's only one thing I need to bring up, which is a typo in the new business. So I'd like to say that the Resolution Number 2024-07045R should be 054R. The 5 and the 4 are switched. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? All right. Next item up is presentations and public input. Why don't we start with public input real quickly here? So if you would like to address the body, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Julie Watkins, and I'm a Urbana resident. And I had some comment coming back from last week. And, I mean, I've spoken about Whole Village before. And from my outside perspective, it seemed, you know, I was listening to people of different opinions. And there are planners who wanted to do it, found a need they had, saw a need, and they were able to get funding. There's also stuff that doesn't get funded, but this did. But it seems that in the process of it, there were not enough attention paid to the people, to other people who were affected. And and people came here that I heard talking where they, specific instances of disrespect, which I don't really think is what we would like to have here. And so I think this is done in a context where there are laws and regulations and policies that are kind of set from, also interacts with what state does and what federal does. And like, for instance, when we're talking about homeless, there was this Supreme Court recent case that came before where the people who were trying to go against the law were, that was being set, were saying they were making homelessness illegal. And it went up to the Supreme Court, and a majority of the Supreme Court sided with the city. Well, that's not the way we are usually here. I mean, in, in, we, I mean township wouldn't do that. I mean, we didn't need to. We voted to give them more money so they could help more people. And so I think some of the comments that were made last week, it was people saying, well, this is the policy, and this is the law, and you should follow it. But, and you shouldn't complain about it. But there's also a social contract. And especially when the laws and policies are set up, people have shown how there are certain biases. And so if something is created that favors one person over another, it's not really a social contract. Really, it's a bad use of social contract to say you should go along. I mean, laws change because people realize after it's been for a while, there's a problem. Right? And then we want to work on it a bit. So I just thought that I'm losing my, I'm losing my thread. But it just bothered me that they were using that kind of thread when other people aren't paying, that some things are not really there are systemic issues that should be taken into account. And I hope the people who were disrespected, that now that we know they have needs that have been there for a long time, I hope they, the neighbors can say, oh, well, we didn't really mean to forget about you, so we can do something. And, I mean, the other thing I wanted to mention is that you were talking last week about setting up the Alternatives to Policing Working Group, trying to figure out the system. Other people have talked better about that than I could, but I would like to be in agreement that whatever system we do do locally, it is not within the hierarchy of police department because it's supposed to be an alter, we want to have an alternative way. And that's what people have been saying. So thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else like to address this body this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation on Tenant-Based Rental Assistance from the Reentry Pilot Program Update from the Champaign Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to have Jessica McCann, the Assistant Director of Community Services at the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, here with us tonight to provide an update on the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Reentry Pilot Program that the City of Urbana has been funding. Just to provide a little context, so to date, the city has provided $250,000 in funding to this pilot program. And I wanted to make sure council had an opportunity to hear about how that program is going, updates, successes, and plans for the future for that program. So I will turn it over to Jessica.
Sorry about that. Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. As Brayden said, my name is Jessica McCann. We're happy to be here today. And so today we'll be sharing about a program that was piloted by Regional Planning Commission. This was through a partnership with RPC through the City of Urbana Home Consortium. And we partnered alongside First Followers and Hope for Women to administer this pilot. So as many of you know, every program begins with a need. The need that led to the start of this pilot program were the barriers seen to employment and permanent housing due to a background associated with incarceration. Many times, we see this leading to a housing crisis for formerly incarcerated individuals. And those who were formerly incarcerated, we have found are 10 times more likely to become homeless, according to the National Survey, based on the 5 million formerly homeless incarcerated individuals living in the United States. So from this need, the idea for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, Reentry Program was birthed. The goal for the TBRA Reentry Pilot Program was for households to be served to be able to stabilize, maintain their residence independently, and ultimately to be able to pay housing expenses on their own once the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program ends. What the program offers once participants enter is one year of a rent subsidy, a security deposit upon entering housing, housing, excuse me, as well as monthly housing counseling sessions. To expand on that a little bit further, in addition to the subsidy, Regional Planning Commission has a HUD-certified housing counselor, and we are able to provide sessions that focus on budgeting, tenancy, and tenant rights as well. So that's something that we've seen our participants really grow in during this time. So participant eligibility, there's a few important factors to enter the program. In order to be eligible for the TBRA Reentry Program, a referral must first come from either First Followers or Hope for Women, which I see their staff is here today. Thank you so much. And referrals are sent to RPC by these programs. For the participant to be eligible, they must reside within Champaign County. So that can be in city limits or as well as within rural areas of Champaign County. Household income must be at or below 60% of the area median income. And the head of household must have been released from incarceration within six months preceding the referral, as well as have had an incarceration period of greater than three months. The reasoning for this is just because of the impact that this timeframe of incarceration has on employment, as well as the background that comes with attempting to adapt to housing following that time. So an applicant must have the capacity to generate employment income to uncover, to cover housing costs independently when the program ends. So the hope is, upon release from incarceration, with some assistance, rental assistance, as well as supportive case management, that these life skills and protective factors can continue to be built in order to maintain housing independently within that one-year timeframe. So an update on the status of the program currently. The City of Urbana Home Consortium provided two rounds of funding. Each of these rounds enabled 36 individuals to be referred from either Hope for Women or First Followers. Within the 36 individuals that have been referred, 21 households have successfully obtained housing with the help of TBRA. Two additional participants have received their vouchers and are currently searching or awaiting entry to housing. And though the success is different for every individual, and I'm sure especially our First Followers staff here today could attest to that, to really assess the overall impact of the pilot program, RPC will need some time to identify how those are doing who have already entered the program once a one-year timeframe comes about, to see, are they able to maintain fair market rent on their own without the subsidy? A majority of participants began entering the pilot program around December of 2023, and our latest have entered around July of 2024. There should be an average timeframe of around January of 2025 to really gather the results of the impact of the program. I wanted to share a staff testimonial, as well as just some feedback from one of our participants regarding the impact of this program. So Tammy Ward is one of our voucher specialists with Regional Planning Commission, who administers the Run Assistance voucher portion of TBRA. Tammy has shared that RPC's Reentry Program has been amazing to administer. The highlight of the program is to watch clients' faces light up when they sign a new lease to their new happy home and a safe place to lay their head. They're really able to focus on looking for work or contemplating about returning to school, taking those next life steps. Clients are able to see themselves, that they're actually people in their corner, not working against them, that they're able to take small steps to learn how to trust again. And finally, I wanted to share about one of our program participants who we have changed names for confidentiality. But just an example, we had a young woman who was referred to TBRA Reentry in February. She immediately was able to obtain work in March of 2024. Once housed, she obtained work quickly, even through the loss of a loved one that she was dealing with, as well as the trauma that came along with the difficult family history that she'd incurred. She was able to maintain work and has been able to begin considering educational programs with an interest in becoming an EMT. Finally, Jasmine is beginning to focus on what is required to regain custody and become unified with her children again. So as you can see, TBRA Reentry is providing a housing subsidy. However, there are many important aspects of these households' lives that are being impacted. That's all for my presentation, and I'm happy to open it up to questions. Thank you so much.
Questions? Therese?
Could you repeat again what you said, counseling at the very beginning? I missed all that. I just, I was trying to write it down. I'm trying to do two things. I can't walk and chew gum at the same time, apparently. So could you repeat that and tell me?
Yes, no problem. So I was referring to our HUD-certified housing counseling. So this is a financial and budget counseling program that we have. We did begin encouraging participants to see our housing counselor. Once they started seeing our housing counselor, they are able to work on expenses, formulating a budget, a savings plan, and being able to learn about tenancy, how to communicate with their landlord, as well as knowing their tenant rights.
Okay, another question. Can I ask another question? To follow up on that, do you have, along with that, do you have any kind of programs? And I don't know if, you know, if our funds contribute to it or not, but like job trainings, the certain skills, certain things like that, that will actually help folks get into an income bracket where they can, you know, do you have any kind of programs like that?
Absolutely. So a big part of this program has been our partnership with First Followers and the supportive wraparound case management that they're providing. So they are walking alongside these individuals to really make referrals to employment programs. And I know I can speak for RPC. There are several programs through WorkNet where individuals are able to get connected in that way for job support and job training. It's not specific to community services or this funding, but there's definitely referral and linkage that happens for our participants.
Thanks. I just, I was hoping to hear that, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Grace?
Thanks. Thank you so much for the presentation and update on this program. I'm really encouraged to hear how it's going and hope that we continue for future years. I just had a question about the number of people referred and households placed, which I think is already a good majority. But I was wondering about the ones who were referred and not placed, if that was from a lack of funds, or being ineligible, or what happened with some who weren't placed yet.
So there's a combination of factors that go into that. And so there were individuals who were referred, and funding was no longer available. For the majority, there are some who were referred and were unable to find housing or perhaps weren't quite ready to seek and obtain housing. And so it does, there is a need for the participant to, you know, meet with their case manager and work on obtaining that housing. And so there is sort of a 50-50 role that is involved in that. And so for some, that's been difficult and maybe not quite ready yet.
Thank you. And let me ask a clarifying thing. So then you're saying all the funds have already been allocated of $250,000? Is that total after the second amount?
Correct. Yes.
Chris?
Has there been any trouble with landlords discriminating against people trying to get housing?
It can be difficult, yes. There is definitely a level of difficulty for those to obtain housing who have a background. And it takes additional time when currently obtaining affordable housing without a background can be difficult. And so, yes, I think, I think there is. Our staff has been training within the last year related to Hope for Fair Housing and trying to obtain that education of rights. And we work on that in housing counseling as well. So we try to educate participants to know their rights and to take action with that. But absolutely, it is still something that is an issue.
Do you refer that to the Human Rights and Equity Officer? Because you know that's against our human rights ordinance.
Yes, absolutely. If there's active discrimination, it is reported.
Thank you. Okay. How, and I understand January 2025 is when your final numbers will be finalized. But I am curious how successful people are getting a job? Because they gotta have money after a year, and they gotta be flying on their own, by their own wings. So how successful are they getting work?
Right now, we're at about a 40% to 60% ratio of 40% are unemployed and receiving the full subsidy. And so we would love to see that continue to improve. And we have hope that, you know, there are individuals that are still working on gaining employment. It's really hard to say how that will come out in the end because there's still time for them to work on that. And also, everyone entered at a different, a little bit of a different time.
Right.
But that's about the ratio we're at.
But it is the case if, after a year, they're out, right? If they don't have employment.
Correct. It is a one-year program.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Therese?
Could you send us, or at least me, I don't know if anybody else, your presentation with your information that you just showed, I'd like to watch it again.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, well, now I get to ask a question. So you had 34 people apply, 21 people housed, is that correct?
Around 36, yes.
Okay, 36, sorry. And that means, and those people, if they are funded for a year for rental assistance, that's the quarter of a million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. And that quarter of a million is for rental subsidies, and I'm assuming perhaps the housing counselor? And then time for processing?
The, the funds solely support the administration of the voucher itself, the security deposit, and rental assistance. So the housing counselor is not funded through this program.
So essentially, it's 13 if we, if we think of a deposit as equal to one month's rent, 13 months approximately.
Correct. Except that security deposits are sometimes required to be more expensive than that. However, yes, on average, I would say that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If there are any other further questions, last chance. Thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us.
All right. Next up on the agenda is Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan Update.
Good evening, Council. Kevin and I are thrilled to be at this point in the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan process and really excited to share with you an update this evening. Tonight, we're going to review the purpose of the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan, just kind of a refresher of, it's been a while since we've had an update. And just to kind of remind you of things that have happened in the past, we're going to take a look at the roadmap that we first presented to council back in September of 2020. We'd like to review how we got where we are tonight, and then also introduce you to a draft of the Imagine Urbana's Table of Contents. Then we'll walk you through the review process for adoption. And again, this is all tentative. And one of the things we wanted to remind council is that the Plan Commission is the one that recommends it to council, and they have not seen this yet. Tomorrow, they will be given access and online capabilities to review, and then we'll start that process, and it'll go public at that time as well. So just a, just a kind of a brief primary on what's the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. I think everybody knows it's our community's vision for what Urbana should look like in the next 20 years. And most comp plans are 20- to 25-year plans. And I think you all know our plan dates back to 2005. So we're right on schedule to be updating that. It also articulates the goals and strategic actions that make that vision a reality. And in our comp plan, we're calling goals big ideas, and we're calling the action items big moves. And the reason I passed out a handout tonight is there's some slides that have a lot of information, so I thought it'd be easier to give you the handout as well. And then it also serves as the city's primary long-range planning document. So it's a guide for the future development of our community. So this roadmap was first presented to council in summer of 2020. And like I said, that's why you have a handout, because it's kind of hard to read as a slide. Direction was given at that time to make our process as inclusive as possible and to hear the voices of those traditionally not involved in community government. And this curvy roadmap was depicted at that time to show that we wanted to be flexible throughout the process, excuse me, and to adjust where, to adjust if we had to wherever was needed. Little did we know that COVID would make this pivot the way, the way we sought community impact. We then started using online feedback methods, SMS surveys, and online meetings before we could meet face-to-face. So that was a precursor of things to come using that curvy roadmap. And then this process, this is where it gets kind of small here, and kind of walk you through what has transpired over the last, last couple of years here. As you know, in 2020, that's when we started our planning process. That's also when COVID hit. So we really had to rethink how we, how we approached people and how we were able to especially reach those that normally didn't have a voice in their government. So we launched in February 2021 was when we launched our website. That provided a COVID-safe engagement tool for people to share their ideas. If you remember, we had the Idea Wall, we had an interactive map, and we also had a survey at that time. But we quickly realized that we weren't reaching everyone with that online method. And so we started looking at alternative methods that were still COVID-safe. We developed an SMS survey that was used on the telephone, and you did not have to have a smartphone to use that. We did Zoom meetings wherever we could. And then eventually, we started with outdoor activities. And that's really where we saw our biggest impact, especially in reaching those that didn't normally get involved in government, was having those events at partners that they felt comfortable with. And so we had outdoor events. As you know, we had several ward meetings that were tied to community events. So we, in the past several months, we've, we've published actually four reports. The first one was the 2005 Comp Plan Assessment. And I have a link here just to show you briefly, if you have to recall what that looks like. So the assessment looked at what worked and maybe what didn't work out of the 2005 plan and why. One of the things we found was that if goals weren't explicit and if action items weren't tied to those goals, that sometimes they weren't, they weren't Oh, I guess it, okay. Sorry. He's telling me that this isn't showing up there, and it isn't. And we don't have to look at it, but
We currently see the Imagine Urbana Published Reports page. That's what's on our screen.
Yeah, and it's not showing the link. Get out of this. Close it or stop it? We're gonna have to close the PowerPoint to get, okay, sorry. Then we'll have to get back in. Apologize. That's something we didn't see coming. So the, this assessed where, where there were maybe weaknesses in the plan. Not, not anything that was egregious, but just what, how things could work better. And again, like I said, it was looking at, we had an executive summary that talked about those, that it was, that it was more successful if goals were, were actually very clear, succinct, and that it had action items tied to it. And if it didn't, then often things just, they didn't happen. It wasn't easy to measure, and so things didn't happen. So some of the, some of the things we learned, looking through a citywide lens via a neighborhood lens, one of the things in Imagine Urbana, and we've talked about this before, is that we'd like to see neighborhood plans, but that's not part of the comp plan. The comp plan is a community-wide lens, and then we'll get into the specific neighborhood plans. And so that's part of our action items in Imagine And so that's part of our action items in Imagine Urbana. Just looking at, again, action items, what we prioritized. So these are several lessons we learned. Equity integration was another point, that it had the fewest numbers of goals, fewest number of goals. And so you can imagine then, maybe it wasn't as successful because we didn't prioritize that. Time spent planning, you know, we're, as you know, we've worked to plan this for the last several years, but really got full-blown probably in 2021. So these are just some of the things we looked at, but that plan was published in September of 2021. Okay, so I gotta go back into this, sorry. Well, I might as well just go to the next one, but I gotta do the link. Sorry, this is cumbersome. I'm gonna go into this one. Okay, that one worked. So then we published the results from Phase 1. That was our community outreach, the broad community outreach, where we were at many events. I'm just gonna focus on one slide here with all the different activities that we had. So we had presentations to twenty-eight community groups during that time. We mailed out postcards to twenty-one thousand households that had the Imagine Urbana website. It was also done in four languages, so people knew how to get on that. We had it in Chinese, English, French, and Spanish. We had fifteen board and commission meetings with our partners. We had twenty-four neighborhood meetings, twenty-six community events. And then we went door-to-door, and these were the hours that we spent going door-to-door. We had several University of Illinois students helping us with that time. We had forty-four students. So we were able to reach a lot of folks door-to-door, which that was really helpful. Some of the things we heard then, five themes developed out of that. Initial community engagement, housing in neighborhoods, city and community services, community health and safety, transportation and infrastructure, and cultural and economic vibrancy were the most important topics that came out of that. Then we had Examine Urbana, and in a lot of comprehensive plans, you'll see this referred to as existing conditions. It's really, it explored what's happening in Urbana and the current conditions in Urbana. And if you remember, this was back when my colleague Lily Wilcock was here. She made a presentation on that, used it as her capstone project for her master's degree, and it was very extensive. Remember, we had different chapters: development in taxes, transportation, arts and culture, housing, energy and the environment, health and safety, and then we, again, the comprehensive assessment was there as well. So this was a lot, a background for people. When they were talking about the Examine Urbana, we would refer them to different chapters so that they could learn more about the city and then hopefully make, give us great informed information about where they, what their thoughts were. And then finally, the last thing we published was the Balancing Act Summary. And this is where we went into the different wards, and we turned an online activity into a board game. This was another thing we pivoted on. We had an online activity, and you realize that you're missing a lot of people because they just don't go online and do things. And so we turned it into a board game and really got a lot of great input from that. So this is a little more recent information you saw. We had them prioritize seven different areas, and the top three were affordable and diverse housing, safe and healthy community, and a strong local economy. And those weren't in any special order. That's just alphabetized here. But those were recurring over and over. It didn't matter if it was an online exercise or in person. Those were the three topics that came out. And then we showed you the weights of those. We showed you where the ZIP codes came from and the top priorities. So just, and again, those were the five areas that they had money to spend on. They had a hundred dollars, but there were a lot more options to spend on than that hundred dollars. Okay. So next, I'd like to show you the Table of Contents draft. And again, this is just a draft. Plan Commission will be starting to review this tomorrow, but we certainly wanted to give you an idea of what to look for. So typically, the introduction, first part, we're going to acknowledge anyone that had help in doing the plan, you know, from the students to community partners will be recognized. The mayor will have a message, and then we'll briefly talk about what is a comprehensive plan. We then will go into our vision and values that were identified from the community outreach process. We'll go through the background, the trends that we see, national trends as well as trends locally. And then we'll go through the Imagine Urbana process. We'll then start covering our big ideas. This is what I refer to as the overarching goals for the city. And then the big moves, little moves are the strategic actions that'll help us achieve those big ideas. So we'll have big moves, and then we'll have specific little moves with responsibilities for those actions and timeframes for those actions. Then Kevin's been working hard on this master map with overlays. There's several overlays that will show people. It'll have annotations, and Kevin will talk a little bit more about that later. Annotations on different areas, and again, the Plan Commission's going to be spending time on that. We're then gonna go through how we're gonna track progress. We've got metrics assigned to every one of these action items, and we're gonna be tracking progress towards those. Evaluation, we want to have regular checkpoints with Council, and we will be doing actual five-year updates. That's something that was not done in the past, so we do want to update it as things change. And then the appendix will have all the related documents, different plans that are associated. These reports that I just referred to, those will be found in the appendix so that the document itself should be pretty clean for people to read and hopefully understand it. And so the next slide gives the hierarchy between these big ideas. You see the big ideas across the top. And out of those big ideas, there are action items for those. And then underneath those are what we're calling the little moves. Those are the specific tasks to make those big moves happen. And so then the metrics are across the board on all of those. So I now like to go through the timeline. As I mentioned, we're going to, we have this review, of course, today. Here I am. And tomorrow, the Plan Commission is gonna get the online access. They'll have specific access, and so, I'm sorry. Thank you. So they'll have access to and comment rights. And because they're reviewing this internally, it doesn't trigger the Opens Meeting Act at that time. If we had them so that they could review each other's comments, it would. And so they are not going to be able to see other comments. They're just gonna give input on their own. And then when we have the first Plan Commission meeting, which will be on the twentieth, we will then make it public so that everybody can see it because it'll be in their agenda when it goes out. Their deadline for providing us comments is gonna be a week before that so that then when the Plan Commission meets, we'll have their comments already added into that draft, hopefully. And then that will be then seen by the public. And at that time, the three commissions that have been active with the plan are the Sustainability Advisory Committee, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and the Arts and Culture Commission. So they're gonna, I'm gonna send special notices to them. It's gonna be open to the public, but I'll send a special notice to them to make sure that they are aware and get their comment. And then we will have later individual meetings with those commissions as well. And so the plan review timeframe is gonna be August 22nd. They're actually gonna see it first, but the meetings will start taking place August 22nd through October 17th. And we do have to have a public hearing. It's a case study like anything other community development case studies. So it'll come, we'll have a fifteen-day notice for when that hearing takes place, and we'll have public comment at that. There is a possibility they may want two public hearings. And so this is just a tentative timeframe that will include study sessions, public hearings, you know, however the commission feels best to get public input and to review and be able to make a good recommendation to Council. So we're hoping to have the Council recommendation by October 17th, but again, this could change. And I think all of you, I know you've got a note from me, many of you have responded already about the ward meetings, what days and times work best, but we'll be going out into the wards, and Kevin is printing some very large land use maps that we'll have on the table for them to look at as well as answer any public questions because they will have had it available since the twentieth. Arts and Culture is meeting on September 10th, B-PAC on the 17th, and SAC will meet on October 5th. And so what we envision, if this timeframe holds true, that the recommendation from the Plan Commission would be on the 17th, then the committee of the whole would see it in its entirety, the recommendation that the Plan Commission makes on the 4th. And again, you'll have access to this the whole time on the 20th. You can make your own comments to get into the plan way before that, but you'll see their final draft on the 4th. I've put in here, you might want to have another committee meeting in the whole. I'm not sure. But I just put that in as a placeholder with possibly acceptance of the Plan Commission's recommendation on the 25th of November. So it's just kind of a timeline. Again, this is all tentative, just based on, we want to make sure that we have plenty of time for public input as well as the review by the Plan Commission as well. Kevin and I are available to answer questions, but I might have Kevin talk a little bit more about the land use map because that's a big part of this as well.
Yeah, I mean, so the land use map is gonna, sorry, the master map is similar to the map that's in our current comprehensive plan, but it being twenty years later, we're gonna, the plan is, we're working with the GIS Consortium to turn the map into a more interactive online tool that'll make it more useful. Sure, for planners, because I want it to be easier for me, but just for, you know, our commissioners, council members, anybody who's interested, being able to sort of really dive into an area and sort of see what the future plan is for that area. Also, so this is a sort of an image of the draft. Also, we're identifying just a couple of key areas. That's what those biggest circles are on that map. Just some key areas to focus on. We have limited resources, so really, it doesn't make sense to, you know, focus on too many different areas. So we have a few areas identified that we really could do some future planning for. And also, we're trying to tie things back to all of our big ideas, big moves. It's all, you know, it all feeds into each other. We want to tie things that we put on the map back to our big moves and big ideas or goals and objectives. So, you know, this, right now, this is in draft form. We've had quite a few staff meetings sort of making this, you know, making this map better, but we'll be sending this out to Plan Commission and then, like Andrea said, taking it around to the wards and really going through it. And yes, so there's a preview there for you. This one's not interactive yet, but it will be.
All right. Thank you very much. Before I open it up for questions, you had mentioned that the Plan Commission would have access. Is there an online way that they're having access? Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I didn't go into that. We've purchased a software where we can edit online. So in this case, the Plan Commission will go on and they'll make comments, and then we can make online edits to those as well. So with the Plan Commission, it'll be very interactive once it becomes public. We're gonna get their comments first, and then we can post comments and review online, like the public would even be able to see those comments as we make them. So that's what they're getting first. They'll, they sign on with their city email account, and they're given reviewer and commenter rights to do that. Then when we have the public version that comes out on the 20th, that'll be the draft that we've made revisions from the Plan Commission. The public will have access, and they can just go on and sign up. I mean, you don't have to have a city email to do that. They can just access it, you know, just online as a public member. And so that'll happen on the 20th, that everybody will have access to make comments. However, we also know that a lot of people don't do that, that they don't go online. And so that's why we really want to be able to go out to the wards and talk in person to people about the plan. It can also, PDFs can be printed directly from that online version at any time, and we'll have some printed versions available. We'll put them at, like we did for the past reports, we'll put them at the library, different public access places, the clerk's office. So we'll have written documents too if anybody wants to come and get a paper copy and look at.
And approximately, how long is the paper copy?
It's really not that long.
I think it's coming in at just under sixty pages.
And that's with all the appendix, but if you don't have the appendix, I think it's about twenty?
Yeah, I'm not totally sure. But again, you have to recall that Examine Urbana, which is that existing conditions report, which goes above and beyond most existing conditions reports. You know, that's not part of the plan itself. That was sort of a standalone thing. So if you were to include that, I don't know, this would be what, five thousand pages, something like that?
Okay. Questions? Teresa?
Thank you for this update. What I would like to know, are any of the links that you were talking about still working links?
For imagineurbana.com? Yes, it still is.
So the public can still go in and like do the Balancing Act thing, or they can go in and?
Those have closed. The results are up there, but the actual exercise itself has closed because we made that report late last summer.
I was just, I guess I was just kind of hoping that people who hadn't heard or have been able to actually participate in that may be hearing about it now and go, oh, you know, light bulb. To probably try to do something like that now even, just to, I don't know. So that's why I was wondering if any of the links were still working, not just with results, having results, but actually giving people still the opportunity to do, even though it won't be counted, but just to understand how this whole comprehensive plan thing is going.
Teresa, I'll check into that just to see if maybe we could, like you said, we can't put it into the, you know, the numbers that we have, but yeah, just for an exercise, let me see if I can see if we can activate it for that purpose. Our license may have expired on that, but I'll find out because I think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Grace?
Thanks for the update. I'll look forward to seeing the full plan. I was wondering to have access to the document after the 20th. Is there a registration requirement like there was throughout this process?
I'm pretty sure you can do it anonymously, but that was a question I was just thinking about a minute ago. So we'll make sure to get that answered for you.
Yeah, I think if we could have, if so, if we could have a PDF or something, I still think that's how you lose a lot of people. That's how I'm lost.
I totally agree with that, Grace.
Once you want me to register and put in my email and make a password, I'm probably not doing it.
My understanding is it's not, but I'll get the exact signup process for the public. I think it was pretty seamless. That's why we chose it a couple of years ago. But I'll find out what the exact signup process is and do that.
And if people did have additional input that they wanted shared and counted, would it make sense for them to share that with the Plan Commission and Council throughout the approval process? There's still, I mean, that public input window?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of ways that you could share your input. Certainly, comment on the draft plan. I'd say that that would be number one. To get comments officially added to the public record, you had, your best thing to do there would be to come to the Plan Commission once the public hearing is opened. But we also will be having study sessions in advance of the official public hearings. So you can come to essentially any Plan Commission meeting between the 20-second study session and, you know, whenever they make a recommendation to Council.
So July 22nd, there's a study session with Plan Commission?
That's the first one, yes. And then.
August 22nd.
August 22nd. And then at every Plan Commission after that, this will be a topic. So whether it's a study session or a discussion item, so public input would be appropriate at all those.
Yeah, I had just one more procedural question about with it coming to Cal on November 18th, and approved at Council on November 25th. I didn't remember with this type of thing, if that typically goes to Cal first after coming from a commission for approval rather than just discussion?
Well, when we did this back in 2005, it came to committee first. So we're just gonna continue doing that, and I think that would just make sense anyway.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm for approval, right? No, the 18th says discussion.
Well, we put in there twice if you wanted committee of the whole to stay in committee for another session. I know that that's happened before. If it's a big case, that you'll want to study it again. So that's why we put in an extra date there, but you may decide. again, so that's why we put in an extra date there, but you may decide, you know, it's fine, or if you want to add it another one. So we're trying to be flexible, you know, it's whatever the council feels at that time. If you feel like you have enough information, you know, we'll go with it, but if you need to study more, we'll do that as well.
Okay, but I just wanted to clarify that it'd be an approval action item on the 18th, not a discussion, because those are different items for our meetings here. Probably, sounds like.
Yeah. And again, these dates are all tentative, so it's, yeah, where are those slides? Oh, it was forthcoming, okay. Let's see.
One more.
One more.
There you go.
Okay. So the, I mean, the official approval has to take place at City Council, so that would, we've got that penciled in here for the 25th of November.
But you'll get the recommendation from the Plan Commission on the 4th. That'll be part of your packet there, what their decision is, because they'll make that at their 10-17 meeting if the schedule holds, and then it'll come to council right after that, what the recommendation is.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to your feedback.
All right, we are on to new business. First item is Resolution Number 2024-07054-R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement designated Champagne County Regional Planning Commission as a subrecipient of home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance for fiscal year 2025. Brayden.
Good evening, everyone. So the next two items are related, they're both TBRA subrecipient agreements, so I can discuss them at once, and then I'm happy to answer questions about them after as well. So before you are two resolutions approving and authorizing the execution of Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreements, one with Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, and the other for Courage Connection, and both of these are for tenant-based rental assistance programs. So RPC's agreement will allocate $150,000 in home funds to support a TBRA program for low-income renters administered by RPC. And just to clarify, this is their standard TBRA program, it's not related to the reentry program that was discussed earlier. This is their general TBRA program that is open to any Champagne County resident that would be income-eligible. And then the agreement with Courage Connection will allocate $125,000 in home funds to Courage Connection, so they can continue operating their TBRA program for households that have experienced domestic violence. So in both of these programs, at RPC and Courage Connection, recipients will be offered case management services in addition to rental assistance. So Champagne County Regional Planning Commission estimates serving between 10 to 15 households with rental assistance through this agreement, and Courage Connection estimates serving six to 10 households. The actual numbers of clients served may differ due to various factors, including family size, but also what the monthly rent is at the unit that they select, and also, as Jessica mentioned earlier, sometimes security deposits are more expensive at different units, so that can also impact how many clients the agency is able to serve. Clients that are enrolled in both of these programs will receive up to two years of rental assistance. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about those.
Questions? Chris?
Thank you, Brayden. Home money is one-time federal money, right?
So the home funds we get annually from HUD, so it's an annual allocation that we receive.
Okay, so it will continue on in future years?
Yeah, potentially, so, I mean, both Courage Connection and RPC, we have funded their TBRA programs for many years, so we do one year, we do two-year agreements, I'm sorry, because again, it's a two-year program for the client, so every two years, we'll do a funding agreement for the program, and our home funds are annual, and they must be made, the funds must be made available to anyone countywide, because we're in a consortium with Champagne and Champagne County, so any renter who needs rental assistance, if they are, you know, if they can apply for the program, and then they can search for a unit really anywhere in Champagne County.
Okay, so this, what you've just mentioned tonight will be county-wide?
That's correct, for both RPC and Courage Connection.
Good, thank you.
Hi, Brayden, thank you. The number of households assisted through these two entities, is that, is the 10 to 10 to 15 and the six to 10 the same sort of average numbers of the previous years?
Yeah, that's typically what, and those numbers came from the agencies, they're just kind of estimating at the beginning of the year how many clients they think they'll be able to serve. Sometimes it's maybe a couple more, sometimes it's less, again, depending on family size of the referrals that they get, or again, you know, if landlords are charging three months' rent for a security deposit, or whatever that situation may be.
And then the monetary allocations, how is that decided, or has that just been the amounts for years?
The amounts of these agreements?
Yes.
So that's what the agencies requested.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Grace.
Thank you. So it says in here it expires in summer 2027, is that right? It's not just a year for this?
So in the agreement, and I'll try to clarify this, if you look in the agreements, we give them some flexibility with the end date of the agreement, because, so for example, if they were to enroll a client today, that client would be there until, you know, July of 2026, but it's possible that they might get a client next June, and they wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily want the agreement to come to an end if they, you know, just are starting to enroll someone. We want to make sure that there's that two-year of funding, so the agreement would go through 2027, just to provide some extra flexibility, depending on timeline of when clients are accepted into the program.
I see, yeah, that totally makes sense, except that's three years, right? Do you need two?
Yeah, that would be three years, yeah. So the agreement is three years, individual clients are eligible for two years of assistance.
Oh, I see, I see, cool, thank you. And then I had just a few more little ones here. Is having children a requirement for this?
It is not a requirement.
Okay, I was just confused on that, like, page two, that says, like, households with children under the age of 18, whose heads of households are underemployed. I guess I just wasn't sure if that was reading like it was a requirement.
No, that's not a requirement. The only requirement, I mean, one of, the main eligibility requirement is that you're considered low-income. So both programs have enrolled individuals, but then also, they do enroll families as well. What are you, can you point to the?
Yeah, page two of the agreement, 46 of the packet, the last paragraph under Section Two, Terms of Project.
I have a page 46. Which page of the agreement?
Page two.
I'm sorry?
Page two of the agreement, I believe. Just Section Two there.
Um...
I was confused on like 12 months not to exceed 24.
Yeah, I think the clarification is that RPC's program, they prioritize families, but, you know, they can't exclude someone if there's an individual who would want assistance. So I think that's maybe just a clarification that it's not exclusive, it's just that's the preference that their program has, is for households with children.
Okay, because it was seeming like that might be the case, when they say also like a minimum of two bedrooms. Yeah, I don't know, I was just confused on if, I guess you're saying it's targeted more towards families, but it seems like it's not?
It is targeted, but it's not exclusive.
Okay. Yeah, I'll maybe reread that some until next week, and try and see if I can understand that paragraph differently, if it's not stating a requirement, and just curious, if it were an individual, why they would have to have a minimum of two bedrooms if it were a single Or is that part of a HUD requirement? Oh, it is, okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Chandra?
Should we do these together, or just, I guess separately, it's only two of them? I'll move for approval, Resolution Number 2024-07-045R, a resolution approving?
Five-four.
Oh. Five-four-R, I was like, I read that, right? A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Designating Champagne County Regional Planning Commission as a subrecipient of home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance fiscal year 25, on to City Council for approval.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? All right, saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Next item is Resolution Number 2024-07055-R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Designating Courage Connections as a subrecipient of home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance for fiscal year 2025. I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number 2024-07-055R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Homes Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Designating Courage Connection as a subrecipient of home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance, FY25, for approval to the City Council.
Second.
Moved by Jay and seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. That ends new business. The next item is Discussion of the Alternative Response Task Force, which is a continued discussion from last week. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Diane.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Yes, just to continue from last week, where we, where you saw a potential list of people or organizations who would be invited to serve on the Alternative Response Task Force, it's pretty similar to what was there last week. I believe we added immigrant services as a 14th service provider area. So the list right now is 14 organizations or service provider areas, plus four representatives from the City of Urbana, representing Department of Community Development Services, Urbana Police, Fire, and Urbana City Council. Just to recap, the provider areas include behavioral, and I would say, there's an emphasis on service providers on this list, so in other words, organizations who would have the ability to be a responder, and who would have the expertise and the knowledge to inform development of the model, and also some organizations who may be serving in more of an advisory role, but the idea is that the organizations on this list have experience in this community in responding in a certain way, and who would have the capacity to perhaps participate in the alternative response model. So that includes Behavioral Mental Health Area, OSF Heart of Mary Medical Center, which has the inpatient psychiatric services, Emergency Services Department, the Level One Trauma Department in the city, is Carl Foundation Hospital, centralized intake for the homeless would be through the Regional Planning Commission, Community Services Division, Mental Health Services broadly, Champagne County Mental Health Board, and they do fund many organizations in the community, the various township services, Cunningham Township, Area Behavioral Health and Addiction Recovery, Rosecrance, Domestic Violence, Courage Connection, General Experience and Expertise, Child-Family Growth and Development, particularly with a focus on the Black and Brown community, the well-experienced, sexual assault, abuse, harassment, rape, races, 911 dispatch center, that's the countywide, we have one system in Champagne County, it's countywide, that's MetCAD, Trauma Informed Response, CU Trauma and Resilience Initiative, Experts in Dispute and Conflict Resolution, the Dispute Resolution Institute, focused, an organization focused on serving men and women reentering, would be First Followers, and then Immigrant Services, either the Refugee Center or the New American Welcome Center. This is about 18 people, there's a lot of, there are dozens and dozens and dozens of organizations in the community, but again, tried to get a good representative mix. These organizations came through a variety of sources, recommendations from provider, service providers themselves, some recommendations from community members, council members, as well as city staff, and suggestions by Barry Dunn, so tried to pull together a representative list. The next steps, we had a Zoom meeting with Michelle Weinsettle from Barry Dunn. She's recommending a four-to-five-month schedule for the task force to work with a, the whole task force convened on a monthly basis, a combination of in-person meetings, as well as a couple of virtual meetings. Michelle, and this will be guided by Barry Dunn and staff, their staff, she envisioned people serving in more of an advisory capacity might have one to three hours of prep time outside a task force meeting, those who would potentially be active participants in an alternative response model would have more time, more of a time commitment in terms of prepping for the meetings, but they estimate it might be four to eight hours a month outside of the task force meeting, but that's all going to depend on what the task force decides to do once they start meeting. And they're proposing that the first two meetings are in person, and then they'll might switch to a virtual meeting. But anyway, they hope to get this convened, I believe, September, early September, is that right? Yes. By the time, the point we're at now is, we now have to invite people to participate, and it's possible that not everyone on this list will have the capacity or the ability to participate, and then we'll, you know, or the personnel. So we want to extend an invitation to participate, that's going to take several weeks to get everybody lined up and confirmed. There's some logistics to work out as far as meetings, location, format, that sort of thing, and we want to make sure we have all that lined up before we begin. And the intent is to make it as, you know, transparent and open as we can, and still be able to get the work, the necessary work done. So a lot of details to work out, looking forward to this break between council meetings to get some of that work done. But if you can give a thumbs up on this is a beginning point to extend invitations, then that will allow us to get invitations out to the organizations and pull together the membership with the task force.
Diane, does this task force have to abide by the Open Meetings Act?
That's, Carolyn, you want to, we're looking into that.
Well, Matt has actually been thinking about that very topic, and he's going to prepare some written guidance for us, but it does, it technically will not, and Matt, you can feel free to join in, because it's not a formally, I don't want to say formed, chartered group, it's more of an ad hoc temporary group, but our plan is to have as many features of the open meetings as possible in terms of transparency for the public and creating records of the work of the group, but it would allow members of the group to talk to each other, for instance, they wouldn't be bound by the rules, they wouldn't have to have a quorum necessarily, they're not taking votes, I think they'll work by consensus. Are there any other things you want to add, Matt?
I think you've covered the primary points. I think that a key distinction is that it's more like a working group of sort of interdisciplinary, interagency, subject matter experts and staff members, along with some electeds, and less like a commission or a board that's formally appointed by the council and functions on an ongoing basis as a subcommittee of... and functions on an ongoing basis as a, as a subcommittee of the, the public body.
Okay. You will have to comply that no more than two members of the Urbana City Council can serve on the, on the committee. That's, that's the, one of the major things. And there will be a lot of work, I would expect, done outside of these once a month meetings. I mean, that's where a lot of the hard work is going to get done. So it will involve perhaps subgroups of this task force actually working on specific areas.
Grace?
Grace.
Yeah, is the public going to be allowed to attend the meetings and will they be recorded?
The plan is definitely to record the meetings and make them publicly available. I think we're still working out the logistics of allowing the public to, to attend but not participate because there's supposed to be a focused agenda. So we're still trying to figure that out.
Grace?
And what would be the avenue for broader public input? Because I hear you're saying it's not technically OMA requirements. And I appreciate trying to still make it advertised and open and recorded and shared as much as we still can carry on to all that. But what about that broader public input when people do want to have that few minutes to speak their time and maybe not at every meeting, but I'm wondering what is that avenue for the general public?
So I, I think I, I want to just share what, what the takeaway, my takeaway from the conversations that the mayor and I have had with Michelle from Barry Dunn. And that is that the, the output of this group, it will be one or more, I'm going to say approaches, we can use the word models, but it's, it's, it's for the, for the council to make decisions. So it's, it's, it's recommendations, it's structure and so forth. It's not going to be fully baked, right? So these are things, you know, what's, here's, here's our recommendations and then the council, if there's one, one or more, and the council can take that up and then discuss that, get feedback from the public, and then we can start to flesh out the details of it based on the council's appetite for that particular approach. The cost, that's something that there's going to be, I would say, order of magnitude costs associated with this. And are these affordable options? Are these options that are sustainable options and so forth? And I think it's, it's largely after the, the ideas come out of the group and with the partners that are able to step up, you know, not, not without resources, but that are, you know, willing and able to do that, that the public really will be able to get an opportunity to weigh in. And that is at the decision-making point when you all have it in front of you.
And, and like I said, this will be guided by Barry Dunn, but it'll be working with the task force. So there may be points during the process when the task force decides, maybe it's time to get some feedback, see what, what people think or something like that. So I think it's, a lot of it is still to, to be determined, but, but the, the goal is to end up with options for really right sourcing the response to the need and making sure we're sending the right responder to a specific type of call for service, so.
Grace?
I'm still trying to understand here, my question is if this approach with the community task force with Barry Dunn leading it was part of the original plan or RFP? Yes, getting a nod, saying yes, okay. So then there's no additional cost for the work with this task force? That's already part of our agreement?
Already part of the agreement. We will need to extend the agreement, though. Timeline.
Timeline, at no cost.
But not the cost.
Correct.
This is part of what you've already paid for.
Okay, and so you're saying at the end of this, this is part of the recommendation? Because I knew that Barry Dunn was going to make the recommendation and that they recommended doing it with the community. And it makes sense that they would make that recommendation with the community. I guess I just wasn't entirely clear that's what was happening. So I think it makes sense. I hope that the community partners here can still have a meaningful input. I hope that it's not kind of overly guided into a preconceived idea of what the output is going to be. So I'm looking forward to listening along. Again, absolutely insist that they are recorded and shared publicly so that everyone can follow along, anyone of the public, especially with council members being limited. I absolutely think that everyone needs to be aware of what's happening in these conversations if they want to give input at a later time when they can.
Well, absolutely. And Barry Dunn has emphasized over and over again that this is, each, each community they work with is unique and it's customized to the community and it is driven by the community. They're, they're there to guide the conversation and guide, guide you to a, a, an endpoint of the task force. But it's, it's going to be very much tailored to the community.
I do want to just, maybe it's obvious, but I, I feel like I want to just say it, that the, the meetings where the task force is convened, which I think the mayor mentioned would be about five, roughly five times, some, some in person, some virtual, those, our intention is to record those and make those available. There will be groups, little subgroups within there that are going to meet separately. We are not going to attempt to record those. So I just want to make that clear of what we will record and what we will not record.
Jaya?
Thanks. I'm going to state again, I, I do have a conflict of interest, but I think it's an important question. Have there been any thoughts about compensation for the task force members? If we're talking about three to eight hours outside of meetings, I, you know, many of these are smaller organizations. We're asking them to spend that much time working on this. That's a kind of a heavy load.
There, I mean, there is money that was set aside and, and part of the idea that I think that council had was that at, at some point early on, there would be a budget that would be presented. I think that staff is largely going to be preparing that. And one of the things that Brayden remind, reminded me of when we were talking about this is, and it will be staffed by staff in Brayden's group. Brayden being one of those people, but also another staff person assisting with logistics, is they are largely funded by grants. So we'll have to figure out a budget just to, to pay the staff who are working on this. But if it is your, if it is the desire of council to compensate the individuals, we could come up with a proposed structure for that. If, if that's part of how you want to spend those funds, we can come up with a structure for that and propose it for your consideration along with the rest of the budget.
Jaya?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself from any further conversation on this because of the conflict of interest, but I do think it's worth noting that it's a considerable amount of time that we may be asking of people.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Grace?
Just reflecting on the compensation bit, I don't have a, a clear, strong opinion at the moment. I definitely, you know, believe in paying people for their time and wanting to, you know, acknowledge and value and reciprocate their efforts and time put into this. And also have the other side of, I think it is relatively short term as far as the planning, I think four to five months. I don't know. I think it's a hard one. And things we also have to think about our taxpayer budget to operate the program and things as well. Kind of down that slippery slope, I think what I remember from the budget conversation, you know, we were talking about, well, what about snacks and refreshments and then compensations? And I can definitely see the value in those things. And I can also see how we have a limited budget and, I don't know, this sounds like something I would add that many hours for four or five months voluntarily, but I'm not, I don't know, I take on more than I need to probably. So I'm torn between those things, but I think it's an interesting point for us to consider.
I think one thing about potentially giving people a stipend or of some kind that we need to think about is, you know, we want, we don't want to disadvantage people who have other responsibilities. Maybe they need a caretaker to come in so that they can participate. Maybe they need something that we personally might not have to do ourselves. But this was the rationale that was given when we put the township board back on a stipend, which is small, but the idea was is it would cover some of those incidental things so as to not disadvantage any group of people who could contribute to the conversation. So I, I just wanted to kind of bring that forward. I think a small stipend would be appropriate. I don't think it's kind of, I realize we're, we're spending taxpayer money, but we are also asking people for their time and for them to be committed to the process. And I think that giving a small stipend of some amount, I think, could go a long way to showing that we are invested in this. I did check and I didn't have to pass the chair because this is a discussion. Carol, you wanted to say something? Okay. And then I did email everybody today about just putting my name out there that I would like to be part of the task force as a city council representative. But of course, that's up for all of the council to decide on the membership. Chandra?
What time of day will these meetings be?
Time of day has not been determined. I can tell you.
Because I would think like these are all people, groups, entities that, I wouldn't say nine to five, but essentially working day. So I would assume the meetings would come together during the working day, you know?
Ideally, that would be the case, as long as they, their work schedules can accommodate that. They anticipate the first organizational, organizational meeting will be two to three hours. The month two meeting, four hours. I mean, these are once a month, but pretty intense meetings. So yeah, that's where, that's where the water and snacks come in, is just to keep people.
Yeah, so like half a day in the morning or half a day in the afternoon. That's what I'm imagining. So I don't know, like, the part about childcare and stuff, like I would think that that would be something they have already, since they'll be at work technically. I mean, I, I do, again, like Grace said, sort of am torn between the, the stipend and no stipend. Yes, definitely pay people for their contributions, but also this is voluntary, you're asking them to be a part of this. They can completely say, no, our organization is swamped right now, but, you know, we can't show up, but here's a, a memo on our thoughts or something. So I think that, you know, some people are passionate about having this in our community that they would do it whether there's a stipend or not. And then additionally, I know this is something that, you know, all the council members are interested in. So how is the determination made which council member will be represented?
That's up to you all.
That's who I'm asking.
Oh, sorry.
Grace?
Yeah, I'll go back to the council because I also had questions, maybe thoughts on that. As far as, just an idea out there too about the groups. I don't know if we were envisioning that there's like one dedicated person or I was imagining maybe let the group kind of figure it out. Like, for example, if one of these groups, you have a main contact and a backup contact person and that they can figure out amongst themselves. I think that maybe hopefully gives a little less pressure than like asking one specific person. It's kind of, you know, who amongst your organization has the potential capacity to do this? And maybe rotating, you know, like send a representative from your organization. Don't want to make it like everyone drops the ball, but between maybe two or three people that are part of the contact for that organization could be a part of it. I don't know if that helps any with like flexibility or volunteer basis. Also curious about, yes, the council representation and the other departments too. And I would think it would make sense to have a similar kind of model as we do for our other partners. As if, as in if we have one or two, or one representative from each organization have, you know, one or two representatives from each of the city organizations as well. I don't have a specific input as far as who with council. Mary Alice has mentioned interest. I'm interested, but I think probably not going to be available for all of that and definitely want to follow along and watch, but I don't think I can throw my name in as a participant. So I don't know if others are interested in having an active role as a council member representative. I think that might help decide it depending on who or how many people are interested or available.
My concern about having rotating people in these is that there's going to be, there's going to be kind of a buildup, right? So we're going to be taking some information and we're going to be adding to that. And so you need some of that knowledge from the entire time. And swapping in and out people, I think, could be challenging to get a consistent viewpoint from that area. Jaya?
Yeah, I, I would agree with, with that. And I will say again that the task force I sat on for the governor's office, like it was, I mean, it was an appointed position, so it was, it was one person. I don't think it's a bad idea to have a backup in case there's a conflict that comes up. But if we're building, it gets very difficult even if someone's watching recordings, if, if there's consensus that's, that people are moving towards, if it's changing out all the time, I, I would have some concerns that it wouldn't be as productive, but. And I'm in a weird position that I have another opportunity. So again, we'll defer to other people in terms of the, the process for deciding who from council will serve.
Grace?
I guess my question, because we have the Alternative Representatives Advisory at the bottom, where you have the Champagne County Christian Health Center, CU Public Health District, Ministerial Alliance, Wynn Recovery, Safe Harbor. That, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how, how well or how much these particular advisory, if you want any of them to be like a second to maybe Courage Connection or something to that effect. I know everything is pretty much service-centered, people that can actually do services. But some of, I think that on an advisory level, if we cannot, if, for example, we can't get enough or, or someone that could come from Carl to be on that advisory committee, then maybe we want to consider CU Public Health District if we can get someone from that. You know, something that's close to it. First Followers, same thing with First Followers, and maybe the Ministerial Alliance can present someone that could be their second. You, you understand what I'm saying? They're along the same line and they, they would, they could work together also to, to present ideas or whatever to the task force as well. So instead of just relying just on those, those one organizations, if, if, if we see a way that, that one of the advisory representatives can work in concert with another organization that we have in that top, that top list, that maybe in, they can, they can work together so that there will always be somebody in that same mindset or that same line of service that would be on the task force, that could be working. I don't know if I, if I articulated that correctly.
Diane?
I, it just occurred to me that I think the good news is, I think, four or five of the organizations listed here have already volunteered to participate. So we've got a good head start, actually.
Grace?
And then I hear Diane saying that she's looking to us to give kind of an okay on this list for Barry Dunn to start moving and sending out invitations.
Well, actually, the invitations will come from our office.
Okay.
She, they thought it was better for it to come from the city rather than.
Yes, that makes sense. But I meant the whole draft it and things still, right?
Pardon?
Will they help draft the letter that's coming from the city office?
Yeah, they provided some basic information, especially as far as the, the meeting format and that sort of thing. And then we can add whatever we want, you know, extra information.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, so just from my two cents, I think this list is looking okay. I appreciate the discussions and some of the things that we've shared and agreed upon tonight. I don't know if it would make sense to consider in the letter, you know, with inviting them to participate and what might be the goals, the time commitments, possibly ask, I don't know, even like a short survey, like, you know, is your organization able to participate in the? in this, and would you be able to do it voluntarily, or would you require a stipend? I think would be an interesting question of the organizations, unless that makes an extra step, because, like I said, I'm definitely interested to consider it, and if, you know, most of them come back and say yes, but, you know, there's a chance maybe every single one says no, we would do it voluntarily. I think it might be worth the ask, but I'm curious as to other council member thoughts on that.
Well, the ones who've volun, we, as I said, we do have several who have volunteered already, so I think you'd get a mixed response, but.
I was thinking something similar. You probably will get a number of people who say yes, and then you'll get a few people who will say no. And so then what do you do? Do you only give the people who say, I need a stipend, a stipend, and not give it to the rest of them? So, I, I think that it, probably the majority of the people will say that they will volunteer, but there might be a few out there who don't have it within their ability to volunteer that, that amount of time.
Also depends if it's through the workday or not, that'll make a huge difference, so, which I assume most of these will be during a workday.
All right, so, I think in general, when we're just talking about the service provider areas, it seems to me like there's no request to change it. It sounds about right. We haven't talked about who out of the Urbana representatives would be on that, and we can put that aside, because hopefully, if they're asked, they will be. Whoever from the police department has been asked to join, will join. We don't have to send out letters of invitation to them. And then, I guess the, the thing that is still kind of pending would be whether or not there's a stipend or not, and I don't know if there's a consensus about rotating people within an organization. There was three of us who said something about it. I don't know if there's other people have thoughts about that. Grace?
Yeah, I definitely see the issue with, with rotating and that longevity. I guess, if, I don't know, if there's a way to maybe have, you know, if we're doing some kinds of organization coordinating with the groups, do you have your main contact person and, like, a backup? I think would make sense. And in my mind, when they were rotating, would be those two people within the organization were working very closely together amongst themselves. So, I don't think it necessarily has to be that way, but, you know, I think each organization, I imagine, will be fully capable to decide within themselves if or who works for them, but it might not be a bad idea to ask for a secondary contact.
No, I think it's always good to have a backup. Does exec, do you guys need anything else? Do you have enough information?
Consensus?
Seems like we have consensus.
We'll get to work. City council representative can be determined later? Sounds like you want to think about it more.
And stipend determined later?
Yeah.
We have some time still to figure that out?
Depends on if we want to, I mean, the invitations need, we need to invite, start inviting people fairly soon, so we need a decision. We'll think, we could.
Chandra?
I would say, I would think that the stipend part doesn't need to be in the invitation letter necessarily. Typically, when you get asked to join a board or whatever, you don't, you do it because you want to impact the work, and then if there's a stipend, that's a surprise to you later on, and a nice surprise. So, I mean, I'm just, I guess, sort of speaking from my experience, when I sign up for task force or boards or whatever, I don't expect a commission, a stipend or anything, especially, especially if I join it through my work during the workday.
All right, so, are you okay with not including stipend information in invitation letters? Okay? All right. No other comments? Okay, then I will close the discussion item. We will go on to the last item on our agenda, which is council input and communications. All right, Diane?
Just an announcement that the July 22 city council meeting will be rescheduled to Monday, August 5, and there will be no meeting on the 5th Monday of this month. So, this body will be meeting, for the next time, will be on Monday, August 5. It'll be a special, it'll be a rescheduled city council meeting, followed by regular committee of the whole.
Okay, well, with no further business in front of this committee, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.